They'll stay like we.
As well.
Right, right.
All right, that's everything here in the sports.
Oh, no.
Whatever she goes to. We don't take her to the city.
My old friend. Now I started thinking. I didn't hold on to the right. Find out possibly. Everything. About just about. Yeah. I know I'm going to.
Yeah. It's exactly.
Sounds like. Yes. That's.
Yeah.
Only.
Yeah.
First. Oh. You guys come up. This is.
Yes.
So. Okay. We're gonna see.
At the end. Yes. Are we going down to Orlando today? You're trying. Sort of plans. It's like. So. Yeah. The people actually. Followed the chair. Well, every half percent. Just. Right.
Should be glad.
So far. Because you're. Down there. Actually, you're. Able to. Apparently, it's both. We're in the. Which was at that interesting. For each all three. Probably not bad. Basically, probably not. There kind of. She would. She would. She. The problem was. And then. Then. Must cut off.
Over the years.
She. Down.
A little. I still.
This. Quite a lot. So. Last day. Yeah. I told you. That's.
Nice. Yeah.
See.
No.
Let's call the order of the regular meeting of common council from January twenty second, twenty twenty five. Could we please have roll call?
Presiding Officer Mary Dean Donderhyde.
Here.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leekin.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Tellman.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorine.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Taber.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Keneese. Present. In order to have a forum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members in. Are in attendance, which is a majority. Therefore, there is a forum for this meeting.
If you would, please take a moment for your own personal request. Thank you, and would all that are able, please stand and join for the pledge allegiance.
We'd like to receive the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united. Indivisible. The liberty of. Let's just start off.
Thank you. First actions on the minutes. Have motion. In minutes. Or if there's any corrections.
I did not notice any correction on the minutes, mayor, so I don't think. A motion to approve is submitted.
A motion. Paul.
I'll second.
Second. Go. Any further discussion? All in favor, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
He votes. Simple enough. Now the hard part. State of the city. So. Change will give. Sorry.
We're looking at. Which way?
We do. Hey, I'm really pleased to come before you tonight and just kind of talk about where we are in the city of Jasper. You know, we've made made a lot of changes over the past year. Many of them a consequence of things that have been initiated in years prior. Happy with the momentum we have and the momentum that's been carried forward. Also. Happy with the way the city has gotten behind our projects. Those things that we continue to see as fundamental, but you'll see that the majority of the projects that we had underway. Were focused around infrastructure. That's been the case with our prioritization of projects. Infrastructure is always raised to the to the top of that prioritization list, and I think. Out of the top twenty, maybe there are twelve or thirteen projects or infrastructure projects. So that'll continue to be the same way. Jasper is the county seat. And as that. You know, as a role, as the county seat, you know, we we have an obligation to. To be there for the rest of the county, all the rest of the communities. We're a hub. You know, we're a hub of activity, of employment, of healthcare. Entertainment, you name it. You know, it's we are a hub within this region. I. I just want to emphasize that, you know, we are we as a city exist. Not just because of the boundaries that exist around the city of Jasper, but because of. All of those other. Communities that are a part of us. And that's a responsibility, I think, we assume. And embrace. And we will continue to work in a collaborative effort. Across all those municipalities, all those. Towns and county organizations. In order to move. Move us forward. When the county moves forward, the city moves forward. City moves forward, the county moves forward. I just think it is a. The only way that we can really get things accomplished. So in a collaborative mode. Again, I was in charge of this. All right, Lisa, my nature. I think I went too far. No, I got it. There. This, the handoff is one of the toughest things I had. So I'm gonna I'm gonna ask Kirsten to come up and speak a little bit to the financials.
The city of Jasper operates with a typical local government structure that includes funds supported by revenue sources such as property taxes, income taxes, and other local fees. The city generates income primarily from property taxes, local income tax, utility fees, and state and federal grants. Like most cities, Jasper's financial priorities include funding for public services, infrastructure, and community development. Major spending areas include police, fire, roads, utilities, and parks. Jasper has worked hard to keep our debt limit low. Our current obligations include the cultural center lease, the river center lease, general obligation bonds, and outdoor pool bond, and the university heights conditional expenditure agreement. In twenty twenty four, fund expenses. I'm sorry, general fund expenses totaled just over twelve million dollars, and park fund expenses totaled four point eight million dollars. Additionally, we used roughly five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds and two point seven million dollars of edit funds to help supplement our budget. We did not spend any money from our rainy day fund. Twenty twenty five projections leave us with an unencumbered general fund balance of five point six million dollars, a park and rec fund balance of two point three million dollars, and an edit balance of six point two million dollars. We do anticipate appropriating two point five million dollars of edit funds towards the regional wellness center in twenty twenty five. As a remainder, the remainder of our ARPA funds and help funds will be spent in twenty twenty five, leaving a zero balance. And our rainy day fund balance will total two point three million dollars. One fund that did not make the list up there was the food and beverage tax collection. In the past eleven months, we have collected approximately five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, surpassing the four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars that was originally predicted with one more month to go for the year. The city.
That started off.
We did start off slow, too. Yes. The city continues to operate a balanced budget to ensure we can meet our obligations, maintain services, and invest in long term growth. Thanks. How many questions?
Very lovely foundation. Thanks, Kirsten. And nobody can speak to it better than our clerk treasurer. Obviously, I can't. Hold up to what she does there. I'm back to one way. There we go. So within the city, this is our employment look at the current time. And this is actually less than we had last year at this time. Last year, we had three hundred and fifty employees. The majority of those, though, were seasonal employees. That were park related, specifically swimming pool. You know, we did employ some of those individuals to work in other areas within the organization, but. For the most part. That that's the big gap, a change from three fifty we had last year to three twenty. The total number of full time employees really didn't change much. I don't know if it changed at all, to tell you the truth. And part time has been relatively stable the period of time. Pretty good mix. Police department. Would be a little bit down during the year, but we have made some recent hires. Just got three new employees coming on board. We'll see a little bit more about that later. The insurance certification, safety, safety is always important to us, and you know, we're proud of the fact that over the over the course of. The years, we've been able to keep this certification. We're the only city in the state of Indiana that maintains this insurance certification. And that's. Requires many audits, both internal audits and external. So we're proud of that. Number of hours worked, see, and the average age of employees at forty six, that may be coming down just a little bit with all the retirements that we've had and the new hires. An average years of service. There's another number here that I think. Is worth telling. Over the course of the last. Year, we had fourteen new employees, and when you look at a hundred and eighty something employees and think about that. Your turnover rate is a single digit. That's unheard of in today's today's world. We we create a good environment, good leadership, safe. They're gonna come home every day, at least knock on wood, because of their safe practices, and I think that means a lot. So average years of service, that's probably coming down as well. When your average age goes down, so will your averages. Here's your service. Really sensitive, so I can't scroll. Too well, but. The planning department, a point that I wanted to make on this slide is that there were forty six new residential units that we had permits for last year. And it's been said in many meetings, we've all heard this, and we have to average well over a hundred. A year really is what our need is. As a county, it's much more than that. The housing studies continue to indicate that. We have a shortage. We're trying to do what we can to. To increase the number of units across the city and the county in order to meet the needs of our local industries. We did receive a five million dollar ready grant to go toward the regional wellness center, one of our bigger projects that we were entertained. At least to date. That nice annexation there with the north north ridge area, it's hundred and ten acres, so. Looking at some development there, and we'll talk a bit about that later on this evening. And we did move from a part time. Permitting specialist within the. Planning Development Department to a full time. Permitting specialist because it was just becoming. Too much of a task for that part time to get out and to actually audit, see people following up. I think that's worked out real well. It scrolled just a second ago, but now I'm. My use the arrows. Stuck. My technical assistant is here.
Here, I'll just sit up here.
Yeah, if you would. Yeah, thank you. The next slide, talking about some of the things that we have worked on. Our engineering group's been busy, internal projects, but I want to point out. There's some new stuff that we're using technology to apply to existing departments. Specifically, I'd like to refer to the JFD Response Rooms Dashboard. And they were able to map this on GIS so that we could see. Where the. Responses are going to be able to to anticipate maybe where resources are needed. So let's go to the next. The. Park and Rec Department. Whereas this is the the Whitey Trader Practice Facility, and that was. Brand new. We opened it up in April. Weather conditions weren't that great, but it was utilized. The entire summer and fall. It was it's been a great facility. Lots of people commented about it. It's really been a a nice addition to our golf program, especially for youth and those that want to. To get into it. You don't have to. Go out on a golf course and learn on the golf course. They can actually learn on the driving range. Be good for people like me as well. The driving range itself. Brought in some money this year, and it far exceeded what we anticipated. I think we figured our break even on was gonna be like forty five thousand dollars just to break even on.
Sixty.
Sixty five, sixty five thousand. So, you know, from there. It it exceeded that. It brought our total revenue up to almost a million dollars in the golf. World, so. Really, really happy with that. And then we did some more some improvements on the back nine, specifically the number ten fairway. And there we. We did some sod replacement. We moved some sod there over to the soccer fields and then replaced this with some soya and sod, so. Doing all that internally. Next. Beeler Park. That was a great project. It's been completed. Park Department. Built a new facility as far as the took down the old. Shelter house, added a restroom facility there. Added a. Walking track. And some pickleball courts. It's just a great facility now for families. The Parklands, this award that we received, the Friends of the Conservation, Du Bois County. Soil and water district was for the controlled burn we did this year, and that was part of managing that entire property. And that was part of managing that entire property as prescribed. And uh, well, we should see a lot of wildflowers in the spring, yeah. So a lot of things going on there. The Parklands Wetland Certification, we've been at that for three years with uh. The inspections and we did receive that certification this year, so we're very happy with that. Okay. Uh. Rooks or Course, not Rooks or Course, but Rooks or Clubhouse, if you will, um, became busy because with the pool construction underway, we. Added some new summer activities over there. Uh, took advantage of an existing facility, remodeled it, and it is now a rentable facility. Lot of things planned to go in, onto that park area. And uh, and felt good with the, the leadership that's been provided there with Janessa and the group. The Hobby Center, I think our record before was about twenty six thousand people. And now we're at thirty thousand plus that have been in their Hobby Center and using that facility. Part of that is because uh. We had gone to an ex- expanded hours. It's not just a eight to four. You know, we've got some programming that's taking place later on the day, evenings, and when people. Can attend, they can attend during the day, but they'd like to attend during the evenings. So it really has made a difference as far as accessibility during the hours. Bouches Playgrounds, they keep adding amenities to that, and I guess we had our first cornhole. League this year, so. Now they feel like those concrete cornhole boards are working out pretty well. The. Facilities of the Mill Depot, Alexander Schoolhouse and Schaefer Barn are really overseen. By one individual and that individual is there to open it, to give tours and is doing just a wonderful job. Over sixteen thousand people came through and visited those facilities. We see that growing as she's reaching out now to uh schools and bringing in school tours. You also see that we started the replacements of the bridges. We're doing one a year as the plan because those bridges are aged and they, they need to be updated. And then the city mill deck, it's a very expensive. Fix for the park department, but you know, now it's concrete, it should last a good number of years rather than new wood. Youth Leadership Council. Now I could spend all night talking about this group. We've got twenty six members, uh. The current. Work that they're doing is on a new sand volleyball court at Beeler Park and something the park department wanted to see. And they have coordinated with the park department in the last several projects. It's not something they're just coming up with. I think they, they go to Tom, Tom's got some ideas, things that they had in their plans and when the. Youth picked this up, they're pretty excited about it and they, they go after it. So this spring, you're gonna see a lot of work out of Beeler Park to get that sand volleyball court. And they do a lot of other volunteer and fundraising. Jasper Fire, I do before I leave that, I wanted to say thank you to Lisa because she is the leader of that group. And uh, they meet quite frequently early in the morning, uh, well before normal start time, so. It's, it's a sacrifice to get there and lead that group. Almost every Wednesday morning. So thank you. The Jasper Fire Department, five hundred and six calls. Out of that, there's a lot of those that have been lift assist. EMS calls, if you will, and uh, it's still a problem for us, hasn't, hasn't subsided at all. As long as the individuals don't go to get medical care. They're not charged for it. So they don't have to pay for the run. And so it, it has become a burden on our fire department and funding. And it has been for quite a while. We're not unique to that. That's, that's true across the state. Throughout the counties. Got new radios in, the Lucas devices. All right, talk about a great investment. This is funded uh by our Leadership Academy. And they, they put Lucas devices in all of the fire departments across the county, put one in. We also funded. One as well as uh, we had a donor for another. So we have three of them in the city of Jasper. With those three Lucas devices, we've had five saves. So what a great investment. You've saved five lives with that. And then some people in the ground barely don't know your Lucas device in there, but it is electronic chest impression. So when you're going to administer CPR, rather than having a firefighter there that gets tired or. That's right. Automatic, automatic machine. Yep. Yeah, first time I saw one of those, I'm kind of ingenious, you know? I didn't think of it. I, I got a feeling the sales of those things are gonna continue to go up as soon as, as you get evidence of the number of saves. We are moving forward now. We're doing our, our specifications for a new tower truck. That's a two point one million dollar investment. He'd been working on that for quite a while, so we hope this year to be able to place that over. And we did have three firefighters in the past that passed away in two thousand and twenty four. You see Mike Shaw, it's already Tanner and Eckert. Three noble, long term firefighters. So I mentioned earlier the G I S in the call map, and so this is what it looks like. You can see that uh EMS is in blue. Fire is in red, I think. So you can see how it's concentrated. The fire is pretty much distributed, but the EMS. Uh, it, you see a high concentration in certain areas in the community. But with this data now, fire department's able to do some analysis on response time and make sure we can get to certain areas where. Where you see that frequency. I think it's a, it's a great move. Jeff Warren over in our engineering department does a wonderful job of listening to the needs and then. Building it into the system. Jeff, I give Jeff credit for this. We did have Chief Schmidt retire this year uh at the end of the year and uh we promoted two. Internal people earlier this year, Lieutenant David Berger and Sergeant Ben Keneys. Since the end of the year, we did hire Chief Chad Dick. And then we have three new officers coming on board, Joshua Pretty, Alec Wallace, Gary Sun. And through February, the end of February, early March, I think is when their starting dates are.
And those three new officers have to go to uh police academy.
One of them is going to police academy here. The next week or so, and then the other two uh. Are seasoned officers. They're gonna have to go through a different type of orientation training to Indiana law. And so it's a little bit different, not, not the full account.
And four ones last night, having a really nice grab, really nice hot water to the park to show up.
Yep, it was great. You can see the number of, we're asked calls for service. Various items that they report, they report these to the uh Board of Public Works on a monthly basis. Utilities, this is an area that I think we should always take note of as an asset to, to the city of Jasper. Uh, you talk to other communities that are relying on independent service. You know, whether it's electric service or water or gas. Our rates are very competitive. And we're able to do that because of relationships we have and the negotiations that take place. We have a focus on utilities and providing utilities to the city. Uh, unfortunately, the way some of the laws have been written on territories, we don't get to cover every resident in the city. But uh, where we do, our rates are very competitive. I know uh in Southern Indiana, we're one of the lowest rates. For every service outbreak. Also, something we're proud of every year, make note of this, is that bad debt write off. That. Is like point zero zero one zero one percent and it's, it's just a. What a great tribute to a group of people that, that manage. Work with our customers to, to make payments that they get behind and uh able to collect for a long time, so. Really happy with that. The uh. Next one is the wastewater plant. We treated eight hundred and seventy seven million gallons of wastewater. Started thinking about that, that's a lot of waste. And uh, this year, if you go to the next one, we'll uh. Some of the bigger projects was replacing the two secondary flare fire mechanisms and carriage assembly down there in the plant. But then we're working on. A new north side wastewater plant and uh that is, that, that planning has been underway as part of the regional sewer district solution. To uh. Handling sewage and the. Hayesville and Porterville communities as well as any growth we'll have on the north side of town. Excellent. The water plant, now remember I talked about the number of gallons of wastewater. Number of gallons of water is considerably less. So six hundred and seventy six million gallons of water is treated in the city of Jasper. The forty six main breaks, uh. When Rob Young came on board as the new general manager, we talked about. The number of breaks that we had in our system and it's been a focus of his to get to the root cause. He's, he's doing some. Analysis and working with outside. Companies to help us to collect data so that we can get in front of this because service levels are pretty important. And the quality of the water is extremely important in any community. So this is an area we never want to fail in. If we do have challenges, we want to work through those challenges quickly. So I, I appreciate the fact that I think we're gonna be taking a much more proactive approach to. The quality of water and finding out what, what needs to be done to prevent those breaks. So sometimes you can't. If we can, if we know what the root cause is, we're able to deal with that. Jasper Gas Department, they've been replacing their meters, uh. AMI implementation's been a big focus of theirs. Yeah, there's been. New gas mains, there hasn't been that many gas lines replaced uh over the course of the, of the year. But the gas department, uh, this time of the year is always susceptible to market demands. If you remember, the last few years, we've had those situations. So. Well done. The electric department, next Stan Seifer. Stan took over when, when Jerry, sure, uh. Jerry Sheer, I was supposed to say Shirley, Jerry Sheeter retired and uh has been. Playing two roles, Jerry's role as well as Stan's original. Uh, and over the course of the year, I mean, it's been recognized by his peers as well. He received this Kerry Vincent Award through EMPA. And uh, you know, Kerry Vincent was a longtime employee of EMPA, was an advocate for public power. And uh, just a, a friend to so many in the power industry. And he had passed away in two thousand and twenty one. So this uh, this line worker award, distinguished line worker award was provided to Stan and. I think it was at a meeting in November, third call right. I think it's notable, Stan is a guy that will give it all. And he's the leader of that entire department, does a great job. They are ninety five percent complete and installing all of their AMI readers, so we're just about there. The arts department. Next, uh, this coming year is their fiftieth anniversary. Uh, so it's a special year for them. They're doing a lot of programming. Planning to celebrate that. This past year, they did a, quite an emphasis on. Bringing the arts to more educational facilities. To do that youth outreach, they've done more uh programming within the studios. And so uh, we're starting to activate that arts center. At a level that we'd be proud of. And there you're seeing there's over seven thousand visitors to the galleries of. Past year, that's, I think that's gonna continue to increase. The next. This always uh kind of raises your eyebrows a little bit, but you know, community crossings is something we rely on heavily. That is now becoming a factor in future funding is that they are requiring. Communities to implement the excise tax vehicles. Or you don't qualify for this one to one match, fifty fifty badge. So that's a, that's a thing. We're looking. Changes in the future and things that are being uh handed down to us as, as things we need to consider. But uh, we certainly don't want to lose this community crossing grant uh funding because it, we're getting twice as much road down the street as we had. They're always working on storm drains. The challenges we see, I think we've talked about it today, there's. A s- storm sewer where. End up with other utility lines running through it. How that happens, we don't know. It happens. We have a lot going on. Street department has over a hundred and sixteen miles of roads taken care of and this, as uh. Over the last couple of weeks, they do a great job of keeping our road to. And passing them. They want to keep the economy running. So this, this slide says a lot about it. Uh, trash. Rubbish. We are known as a clean community. And uh, picking up rubbish is a big factor when it comes to that. Picking up uh leaves. The streets we've been, I don't know of any communities sweep their streets as often as we do. Uh, so we've, we've got nice, clean streets and it's notable of those residents and visitors in town. Jeff was not shooting for a goal of a hundred dogs, but he came close. Street department also picks up these strays and then takes them back and. If they, they have a chip reader, they can find out who the owner is. In most cases, a lot of them repeats. But if not, then as indicated, there are sixteen of those dogs were sent on to DuBois County. At the next. This is the Jasper insight that uh. We just talked about a little bit earlier. This, this is our notification system that you know if you got a. Oil water notification in your neighborhood or if there's a storm. Issue in the neighborhood where a tree's down. This is where you can go to get notifications that impact you locally. Many of us sign up for emergency notifications that. Maybe at Evansville or Louisville, this is a Jasper. Notification system, just today, I think we posted that uh trash pickup was gonna be tomorrow. We're gonna be running a double crew because of the cold, so. Uh, if you want to, want to find out what's going on, just keep you up to date and it's good. Not just for residents, but let's say you've got a. An elderly family member that lives here and you live in Austin, Texas. As a result. And you can. And you can stay up to date as to what's going on here in town or if there's a need to follow up with your family members. I think that's pretty important in this world. But there's a lot going on, I just touched on a few things here, some of the similar common reporting we've done in the past. In general, I would say that. We've addressed a lot of the challenges well. That we've had over the past year and we've got many challenges before us. Uh together we can make things happen, and I think that's what Jasper's known for is making things. Happen, getting things done. So thank you for your time. Next thing on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven. That's an ordinance amending unified development ordinance for the city of Jasper, Indiana and its jurisdictional area. This is for the second and final reading procedure. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the second reading in full or by title? Like a motion read, second reading, but I'll only please. A motion for all, I'll say. Because I got the bets, all in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? With the city attorney, please read ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven by title.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-seven. An ordinance amending the unified development ordinance for the city of Jasper, Indiana and its jurisdictional area.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion for answering, I'll say. Second, so. Further discussion.
Updates that we do manually in the UDO through the planning department, planning department. In there, please, once on this one, just to touch on those again, the allowance of adding R two, all the families into the R two as they be permitted to use this thing, special exception. We've got a local solar chat, we've got going on in this, and there goes the two major major update points that we need to keep. UDO. Do it again next year. See what comes up first, make adjustments.
Any other comments or questions? Aye, all for vote. All in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven passing, please say what they're saying, aye?
Aye.
Do I need to go through the third? Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the third and final reading in full or by title?
Make a motion to read by title.
The motion, Vince, title only.
Second.
Second for John. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
I oppose. City attorney, please read ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven by title.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-seven. An ordinance amending the unified development ordinance for the city of Jasper, Indiana and its jurisdictional area.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the third and final reading?
I'll read that motion here.
Motion, go. Second, second for all. And further discussion. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one. Do I have a motion to read the ordinance on the first reading in full or by title only? Think motion read by title only please? Wish you all. Say, we'll say to Vince. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now you want, I mean, this is the first read, so we'll go through. Okay, city attorney, please read. The ordinance by title.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash one. An ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the adoption, amendment, or repeal of ordinances and resolutions.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the first reading? I'll make that motion. Have a motion for Phil. Second, second for Vince. Further discussion.
Um so as you know, from the last meeting, we had discussed, our address was two meetings ago, um. Adding language to our code that um. Gives some um meat to the laws of how we pass ordinances and resolutions so that um. The community and and just the public in general can understand that how that process works. Um and and for ourselves as well, so um. Most of the language, much of it comes straight from the Indiana code. Um there is one section that I asked you to pay particular attention to that um sets a deadline for submission of the materials. I indicated ten days because I think that's what you had suggested um. And otherwise, it's all. Pretty clear and the only thing that we're really changing is the fact that as we just did on the last ordinance, we would not need to read it. The ordinance for the third reading, um well, it would just require two readings. And typically, those readings are one meeting, the first reading, and then it would be the next meeting, the second reading, right? If that is, that's really the only way that it would happen. If um if the ordinance were to be presented. On one evening and asked to be heard um for one reading only, like we've done in the past, that still can happen. It just requires, as it always has, a unanimous vote of all of those present and then there have to be at least two thirds. Of the um council members present and voting in favor of it. And we may have discussed this before, but what makes it that ordinance or is like a one reading only or a two reading process? What is the, what's it about that ordinance that makes it require a second reading or our only one reading? Well, truthfully, um. The normal procedure is supposed to be multiple readings. When I started, we did everything by one reading only, I mean, very seldom. The only things that we did um by multiple readings were things that were dictated to be multiple readings because of public hearings and whatnot. Um in the in the code and um over the years, it's just become apparent that. It feels um like you're more informed if you get the opportunity to um hear the ordinance in an introduction. In an introductory setting, first reading. Discuss any questions or concerns and then come back. Gives you an opportunity for those thirty days in between to, you know, make any comments or suggest any changes. Um so I think at this. That's really the the appropriate procedure. Uh we still do ordinances for one reading only when things come up. Um suddenly, um a lot of times, I'm not pushing on you, but a lot of times it's maybe an appropriation or something that. We have to get taken care of um in a in a pretty short amount of time, but uh otherwise. That that's really the the basis or the difference between the process.
On on that scenario where we have to, we need to vote on something faster than the ten days, you know, something comes up relatively important. So we would vote on that right before we have the vote on the other item that attracted, does it have to be a seven to nothing vote or could it be just majority or?
So the um.
Needs to be unanimous.
One reading only, but I, that's not what you're talking about.
No, no, I'm sorry.
You're talking about the ten days.
In yellow, yeah, the ten days.
The ten days, so that can be a majority.
Just a majority.
I I would I would suggest that we make that unanimous requirement, if we're going to have a requirement. Because everything else uh with exceptions. Or it refers to unanimous consent. That's what I would.
That's prerogative. I I always.
That's not the ordinance, is it? Is the statute?
The statute does not require any time limitation, that's just a local preference.
And you're always going to have that what is, like, I I think majority would be following. You know, this is a emergency ordinance, stuff like that, it might come up.
You would still.
I mean, let's shoot for nine percent or better rate, that doesn't happen, but it can happen. Where you don't get information on time.
So as it reads, then we could have a a four to three vote that we need to vote on something that night and then we would vote on that particular item, that correct? So every time, like if there's.
That would just be the first reading. Unless you voted unanimously to approve it and that wouldn't happen if you didn't have a unanimous vote. That makes sense.
So the one reading procedure would have that seven, seven votes.
Right, right, but but to to get it to allow us to vote, in other words. You might bring something up that we we need to vote on, but the board says, you know what, we we need more time and so we could actually vote it down, that's right. Okay, so we need a majority vote, so we could pass it four to three and then we would vote on the item and if it passes seven, seven to nothing, you would go through that.
For the first reading.
For the first reading.
Yes. It wouldn't have to be seven to nothing.
Yeah, so maybe four.
You would have made it seven, nothing to make it a one reading only to get it passed, I'm not.
Well, I I would recommend, if we can't get a unanimous consent on that, I'd say two thirds. Let's make it a little stronger. I mean, it's important to me to be deliberate to up the rates. Uh we'll see that later tonight when I say that, but uh to have the extra time to solve them, and and I think it's it's important to. To be cautious, to give yourselves the extra. I I would also recommend a change in that section uh for letter C. Right now, the way it's worded, for the way I read it is, it says. Okay, the ten day rule can be a. Can be satisfied by either emailing it or putting it into an internal mailbox. So there's technically no rule according to this that says I've got to be notified that it's sitting in my mailbox downstairs. I I would like it to. Um I I'd like to have a little bit more. Uh teeth teeth, I guess, um.
More, you send everything out, email.
I I know we, our current practice is that we do get the emails, but the way it's worded just is a little.
I mean, I I do typically, once I make all the copies of everything, I try to, I mean, I think I have standard. Email to you and said, copies are in your box, when when they are.
Right.
Scratch, I I'm just, I'm willing to do that.
I'm not, I I'm, I will do whatever you tell me to do, I'm just not sure that those kinds of um details are what is intended to be part of. Our city law. So it's entirely up to you. But I see what Chad's saying because it could be in your box and the mailbox down there, but no one told you it was hidden there and then you show up for the meeting and like, I never saw those people. I would say that it is. If if this passes, then you know that anything that is intended to be on the agenda. Is going to be in your mailbox. On or before that, whatever that tenth day is.
So second, second line in your scene, just scratch either and change order and. You'll have it by email and in your mailbox. Scratch either, change order and.
I think that's, I think that covers it. All right, that's your call.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, very good.
Well, the only reason I put more honestly is because if if there comes a time when we go to electronic. And there is no more internal mailbox, that's why I'm going to be more.
There's a time we make an adjustment to the stable. Okay, so we've got adjustment in section C or section four, paragraph C. To scratch out either it's down by email, scratch out or and. So another change?
I I would recommend a two, a two thirds memorial, this is pending, this is pending rules.
We have to, we have to vote on that or is that? I mean, I don't feel that it's necessary, okay? I don't feel it's necessary, we have a state statute that we follow. In our in our ordinance, now if you want to do that, then somebody, then you have to vote. Make a change.
I guess that's technically a motion, but but there's no second.
Okay, so I have a motion to add a two thirds. Vote. To be considered.
Can I, of course, that's section four, item C, to suspend the ten day requirement rule. To have two thirds of your races.
Isn't that pretty much the same thing as what we have? What's two thirds of seven?
Good question.
So two thirds of seven, we're still have it, it's still move be a four, uh we're working to go.
I think seventy-five.
It'd be five.
It would be five.
You might assume, no. Not good now, sorry.
It's close.
It'd be four point six.
Four point six, yeah.
Well, most would be a show up, that's.
They could have a little.
And that, that's C.
And it would be a vote, so it would be a majority or in that case, two thirds of those present voting. Not, oh, so if somebody was absent, that would make a difference.
So unless the common council show up a two thirds majority. Take up consideration, so you're, today had that, is that in section B? That you paid section A. Last sentence, so two thirds of all the elected members you brought about, until the first reading.
No, because we're not talking about that, we're not talking about the one original.
We're talking about the last minute, only for T I A.
So I know what the change is if you want to take the vote.
All right, so I've got a motion from Chad to change that to a two thirds. Vote, uh take up consideration. Suspend the rules. We have a second, second, we have a second for that. Further discussion. Right now, all in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
And the Chad. That's all. So it's five to two, all, all against, but the same thing.
It feels the second hand.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I add that too. All right, so we need to go forward, go for the vision. To go on it or with these provisions.
It will come to the, so um. But then a motion. Right, but now we've done a motion and a second.
For the first reading.
Okay.
Brief the ordinance in the first reading.
Okay. So it will come to you at the next meeting with the amendments. You just voted to make this change.
They just voted to make the change. They had that to change too.
Okay, great, you voted on the amendment, so um now vote. To move it forward for second reading at the next meeting.
With the amendment.
So it has passed first reading with.
Not yet.
It's, yeah, right.
So we've agreed to amend it.
Correct, right.
For the for the first reading vote.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And Phil and Vince, you guys will now submit the motions in with your group to amendments.
Yeah.
Move forward with it. Okay, no further discussion, all in favor moving forward with twenty twenty-five dash one with stated amendments, say nobody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is incumbences for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
I previously provided a detailed list of twenty twenty-four encumbrances to be carried forward to into twenty twenty-five. Including the amount and description for each, these encumbrances represent funds that were committed in twenty twenty-four, but were not fully expected by the close of the fiscal year. The total amount of dollars to be encumbered is eight million one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. The total amount of dollars to be encumbered is eight million, one hundred and sixty six thousand, eight hundred and eighty six dollars and thirty four cents. Anyone have any questions about the encumbrances?
I'll move the the group to come. I'll second. Make a motion, John, second governor. Any further discussion? All in favor, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is the president for exam for twenty twenty five.
Here, I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Liddy as the president of pro temp for twenty twenty five.
Bush, Nancy. Second, all. Any further discussion? All in favor, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Bill Ridge Tiff. First team representative.
Evening, counsel, uh, Rude Kirstens here of the Happy Kirsties Development. Um, first, uh, wanted to start this off and uh, give my. Sincere apologies for the the mix up and the misunderstanding that I had. Through the prior conversations leading up to this point, it was an honest professional mistake on my end. And I have taken the measures uh of hiring the proper consultants, uh, Mr. Nick Lawrence over here with the Wheatley Group. Uh, to assist me through finalizing this process and then for future projects moving forward, I will have professional representation to make sure that. Everything is ironed out and done in the proper way, so I don't make this mistake again, so. I own that and I apologize and I'm sorry for the confusion that it caused. Uh, so why are we here today? Uh, yesterday, uh, the pleasure of standing in front of the um, the utility board. Uh, for the main extension reimbursement and that's what I meant by the mistake I made, uh, by misunderstanding. That the main extension was not getting the utilities to the site, but rather the uh, main extension reimbursement uh throughout the project. Um, with that, uh, beginning in November, uh, we started having conversations uh with Rob. And a couple internal conversations to conclude a dollar amount of what that main extension reimbursement would be. Uh, be it that there was no amount um calculated or discussed leading up to that point, whenever I brought this to everybody's attention at that time. Um, since then, uh, received a favorable recommendation, I don't know the exact terminology of what happened last night, but. They passed it and that's why I'm here today uh for further consideration uh with the TIF agreement uh that we were in uh months ago. So uh since then, I think I was able to, uh, we've had several meetings on this and I've presented a lot of information on the project and I don't want to. Uh, go back and and talk about points that we've already talked about before, but um some new things since then, uh. The uh, the developer agreement that was presented uh alongside that was being talked about with the main extension reimbursement. Uh. As we were getting uh final estimates and everything else regarding the construction of the homes and the infrastructure itself. Uh, based on some requirements to make the um, the infrastructure meet. Uh, city code along with uh material price increases whenever we started this conversation initially back in about April. Whenever the estimates, April twenty four, when the estimates were put together. Uh, we experienced some pretty significant headwinds um with price increases and I'm also trying to project this out to the future. Potentially ten years of finishing this project, so I hope everybody can respect that it's an extremely difficult math problem to solve. Trying to guess what uh inflationary measures that we'll face over the upcoming years. All that to be said, uh, we were also uh notified that we did not receive uh the ready to uh funding. Which is a very integral part of this entire project itself. Um, since then, we've uh tried to become creative and figure out other ways to make sure that this makes sense financially and still obtain the price points that we were trying to accomplish in the first place. Um, thank you, everybody, for your support on the RIF application. I think everybody on this council received notification that. Uh, we were awarded uh the RIF loan in the sum of two million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I'm very grateful for that as it's going to help a lot and save in the financing and carry cost of this project over the years. So thank you all very much for your consideration, allowing me to apply for that uh program. Um, the infrastructure estimates themselves, um, there was some documentation sent out on that. And the original estimate uh that we had submitted and the five point one two seven range in there is now north of six million dollars. Uh, so as you can imagine, trying to keep. The exact target price points um that we had before was extremely difficult and became essentially not feasible for the project. And that's where the consideration for a ten percent uh target price point of the homes at two hundred and seventy five thousand was brought to. Everybody's attention. Um, and along with the uh the villas as a target price point at two hundred and forty and then the lot cost, uh, the lot price average sale at forty three thousand, five hundred. And those are off a little bit from the numbers that we had discussed before. Uh, but I can assure you, after doing some market research of other communities. We are still far below what other communities are producing of the similar product type. Uh, a lot of other communities that I saw delivering products like this in subdivisions very similar, they were starting in three hundred eight, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a very similar home. So starting in the two hundred and seventy five thousand dollar range, I still deem that a huge success for the community of Jasper to be able to provide housing. At a reasonable cost uh to our residents here. So. All that to be said, I I won't uh get into detail on. Exactly uh the outcomes of today's meeting, I I don't feel as if that's my position uh to do that, but my request today. Is to amend the uh TIF agreement. Uh, to show the reflection of uh removing the term in lieu of to allow for us to receive the main extension reimbursement fee. Reimbursement amount up to the amount that was approved last night and that was four hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars calculated by the utility board. Um, along with that, wanted to come today. And just set realistic expectations on what it's actually going to cost to build these homes and what the target sale prices are going to be. So I didn't have to come back next year and re-explain to everybody why we didn't meet any of those price points. Felt it's very important to be transparent and honest through this process and I hope that. Everybody can see I've given it my best effort uh through all this to do so, be it that we're all in the same team here trying to provide. Housing and attainable price for the residents here in Jasper. So. All of that uh to be said, I did bring again Nick Lawrence here, he's to assist um in answering questions. Um, he's done, uh, I'll let him introduce himself if he comes up here, but he's done many of these projects, um. Helped me be liaison between uh packaging up incentives and helping developers and public municipalities. Uh, come together in a successful private, public, private uh partnership. So with that, I will open it up to any questions uh tonight.
Questions.
Yes, I I have big questions, uh. Uh, I'm not a uh real estate guy or. Doing, I don't pretend to play, how's it doing? Play one on TV, um, so, but it's my understanding, Rick, if if without TIF subsidy. The the whole price or I guess the lot price which gets incorporated embedded in the home price, starting price. You're gonna be in that price point that we're looking for, whether it's the the two fifty or the two seventy five. You would be there, where you can deliver with or without the tip. Isn't that correct?
I don't think that's exactly correct, uh, because there's a lot more that goes into the longevity of these projects and the amount of carry. And it also depends on if they, if the development itself is successful, so whatever you're calculating these things in. Being able to collect through the years to float, I'm using the term float, because if we. Install, you know, over six million dollars of public infrastructure and can't can't sell. Any lots, the lots that we do sell, that money that we're recouping back is going to assist us and help carry this. So I can't give. An exact answer on that, other than the answer I can give is that we're giving it our best honest effort. To provide these quality homes at the best price possible to the community. And the way that we can do that is through the public private partnership that we're discussing today. So that was a very roundabout answer to your question, but I can't answer that extremely directly.
Before you had mentioned that you are, in the developer agreement, there was going to be a certain percentage of homes that would be sold at a certain. Price point, are you still? And I know that price point changed, but you're still willing to agree to sell.
Ten percent.
Percent of homes at two hundred and seventy five thousand, is that correct? If you have the. Water main agreement and the one point one million dollars.
Correct.
You'll sell ten percent of homes at two hundred.
So how does that work? Do you just build a spec home at two seventy five and say, here it is?
Yeah, that's a really good question. No, that's a really good question, uh, because that's a, that was a common, um, that was a recurring question brought up. And the the reason uh throughout these hundred and fifty five housing units that would be developed. We will then essentially, if we don't have enough clients that are going to build at that price point, because we sell the lot, the homeowner can then design the home. In whatever fashion they choose, so we can't. You know, somebody might um increase the footprint or put different upgrades in their home and it could. While it started at two seventy five with the upgrades that they put in there, it could end at three hundred thousand to their choice, but. It would be my obligation now to make sure that I provide ten spec homes that are at or below two seventy five. To make sure that I meet the requirement that I'm telling everybody today in this room, so.
And homes are ten percent.
Yeah, it's ten percent, it's like it said.
Ten percent of the homes, correct.
Ten percent, not not ten.
Sorry, B, yeah, respectively, twelve plus the the villas, but. Again, it's a, I understand the uh, the reason for the developer agreement and for the council to be able to measure the success of this partnership. Um, so. It's a. Again. We don't like building spec homes, but we're going to to make sure that we meet the requirements that we have agreed to in this. So that's a direct answer, we like people to be able to choose and build the home that they choose instead of. Moving into a spec, but we will be building specs in the subdivision.
But my calculation is right, two seventy five. Thirty seven five thousand dollars, twelve and fifty square foot, home here about two twenty square foot.
Yeah, with a lot, yeah.
And. In shooting construction trades, what's the average on?
Kind of said it's about average. Yeah, construction.
Yeah.
Well, now it loses a lot too.
No, that's right.
Yeah.
That's what I was just gonna say, that's, that's everything all in, that two twenty.
So we were at that price point, you have a couple options to offer uh the the builder, in other words, somebody comes in and said, you know what? I I'm looking at that two seventy five price range over there, but uh, um, do you have one, do you have three or four different ones? So uh, there's a good chance somebody will come in and say, you know, it doesn't have to be a spec home, I want that home, build me that home at two seventy five then. Because I like plan C or something like that, as an example, is that, would that be correct?
Yeah, we've got, you know, we've got thousands of home plans that uh customers can pick, but I'm not saying all of those are going to be in that price range.
But there are.
I haven't, I haven't quantified them, but there's a lot.
Okay. And that's, that's good, I think that'll help you out because, you know, to your point, I don't think it's uh the best scenario for you to to start building. Sicking that kind of your own money and the whole that you're not sure that it's want to sell, but if the uh customers or the the homeowners are wanting something like that. I I think and you have different ones to choose from, you're more out of the sell that that one.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And somebody could come in and design a brand new floor plan that could be in that price range.
Sure, that's all right.
And with boards knowledge as well, plan some of things. He says he's getting a little built, ten homes in there, we have some things in place that you deal, so we don't see the ten exactly.
Yeah.
Going next to each other, writing down.
And third is two seventy five price include the lot?
Yes. Yeah.
And I guess that two seventy five includes the way you can take off for the TIF utility reimbursement and the savings under RIF.
Correct.
So it's really would be starting out closer to two eighty seven, is that right?
First four foot.
Two hundred and eighty seven thousand, all right, so those ten, those ten percent.
Essentially.
Without the subsidies. Uh, so, yeah, without. Without incentives, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's rude, that's where I was at when I was suggesting that you're still going to be in that price point without the incentive, but. Right, I know it's a, it's a nuanced, complicated answer, but I I I can't find around. That.
Yeah, I can't get away from that thought, I guess, is.
About the TIF is four point two percent higher on the same.
And to that point, I think he, you know, what he's trying to do is, you know, Chad is so building his own homes at the best possible price. But I give to, you know, if we can save the end user ten, twelve thousand dollars, it may spur that person to. That's an area, and that's the goal of what you're.
For, for some, well, that's a, a choice of this window or that.
Could be, yeah.
It is, but for others, that thirteen thousand dollars, you're talking about, what is your point for some time for your PMI, that's a big deal.
That.
Average household will be able to take the tasks. In this community.
Also, the housing study has has shown that this is a price point that we need. Um, only counting when they did their housing study that we we needed more affordable housing now. How what, how do you determine affordable housing when uh inflation is at forty year high? And I I think it's phenomenal that that you feel you can get in there at two seventy five. With all the the price increases and things that you've had to deal with over just the last few years. And hopefully we'll get that under control with new leadership, but.
Yeah.
Um, it's been very difficult, I don't know how you put a plan together when you don't know what they're going to be doing. You have to make the estimates of how much those things are going to be going up over the, over the course of that plan, so. If we want to support growth in our community, then we want to support housing for that growth. So that we can get people to move here, we have companies that need people to work at them. Uh, we have people probably, what do you think, there are twenty thousand that are driving into Jasper? Every day fifteen thousand, whatever, I don't know the number, but they're driving here because there's no place to live for them. And we want some of those people to live here, to work at Jasper, and to work at Kimball, to work at Haster Brands, to work at these different. Places that are very, very important to our community. And this is just a tool to help support the growth. To help support an incentive for the growth of of what we're trying to do here. So I commend you, Rooker, for for investing in Jasper, what you've done so far and what you're trying to do. And this is just a tool to help us to keep those prices down as low as possible. If we don't trust anyone, then why do we even move forward with anything? You have to trust people and I I don't get that out of what we're trying to do here and. And I I I don't even agree with a ten year sunset on things. Because the the state put the statute in so that mayors and councils of the future. Could make the best decisions for their communities, that's why they put that into that level. If we don't trust council members in the future that are going to make good decisions or mayors that are going to make good decisions. Then we have to get that down to a ten year window. I trust whoever's going to be here. I I've been fortunate to be here for a while, but I I trust everybody that's here and I'll trust everybody that this community will pick in the future. So I'm not, I don't have a trust factor with what we're trying to do. What I see us here is we're trying to promote growth in our community through affordable housing. Which Rooker is trying very, very hard to do. That's, that's my view on it, so I'm up for that. I think it should be a twenty year window so that they have flexibility, so they can make good decisions. There's, there's, who knows what laws are going to change in the next few years? I mean, we're sitting here, this is the, this is the game we've got today. Next year, somebody else may throw up with something else, our property tax rates might go down twenty percent if. If Governor Brown decides he wants to make some changes in property taxes, so we're going to have to adapt and adjust to whatever the game is. As we move forward, so this is what the game is now, so I don't think we should change the game. We should just play the game the best to our ability, what we feel is best for our community and best for the future of Jasper and the best for our growth. So. That's by two cents. I uh, you know, I like the utility reimbursement, I think that's great and I like the RIF. I think that's pretty good, it's the TIF then, like in capturing that, you know, pulling that out. Um, and that was one of my concerns about it. You know, I would, the virtue to see that you just build whatever houses you want at whatever price you can sell them.
That's, I'd say that.
Instead of trying to say, well, we're just going to make ten and even at what I would say is a high price point for most people.
Art, that's a good point, and I I think that um. The point here is that we're not, it's not that we're trying to maximize the home sale price, is that we're trying to accomplish the opposite. And what I've been talking about, you know, hasn't changed since day one and that's being able to. Provide these at the best possible price for the residents here because that's what our community needs. Right now, we do not have. Another subdivision, quite frankly, planned in Jasper. Brookstone Seven is filling up. After Brookstone Seven is filled up. We have no subdivision to go to. To your point, Gavin, for future growth of our community. Uh, at the moment, it's tapped out. So that's why this project, I believe, is crucial, and I also believe based on the feedback that we're getting from our clientele. Is it's in our best interest to deliver a product that's at the best possible price. And that's our goal, and that's what I've said from the beginning, and that's what we're going to do throughout the end of this project as well.
One, one other point to make, as, as, as we correct some of the things that's been, that we've dealt with and inflation in the last few years. That's going to be a positive effect, or it could have a positive effect on the, on our growth and how many houses we can build. And two seventy five, the, the interest rate is going to come down. I believe wholeheartedly that the interest rate will come down. As we correct all the other inflationary things that are going on, which will be corrected. And then we're in a position. To, to grow this entire area there and build homes and bring people into Jasper and, and to grow our base. That's going to benefit all those people that live in those homes are going to buy from all, all of our businesses. And, and they'll support our community and without growth, we're, we're stagnant. And without growth, I, 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 I worry about the companies that we have here that are strong. Strong companies that have been the lifeblood of our community and give back. And, and we have to have people to work at those places. So without housing. We're going to depend on people just driving here for the rest of our lives. That isn't going to make it. It's not going to make it. We've got to have a solution, and this is a step in the right direction. And, and to what we need to do to enable our community to grow, if necessary, people that we need to come and be in our.
And talk about one point one million, um, forty two million, no, no.
Yeah, four hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars too.
Okay, so that's a one point five million on that, which is.
I want to.
One, one and four point nine.
I had one last note, and since Paul brought it up, I just want to make sure that. You know, that everything that we didn't ask for, anything to be bonded, uh, upfront. And which could potentially put the city at risk either. Um, the original amount that we asked for was equal to the ready grant. Cause I was really hoping that we had a competitive project and I wholeheartedly believe that we did. Um, so with that being said. You know, I, I never once asked through any meeting that the city, uh, bond this upfront and take that risk. As a citizen here. And Jasper, I think it's, uh, it was a fair proposal. Uh, for the developer to take the full risk of this project, and we are because it's on a performance base. If I don't perform, none of this conversation even matters. The main extension or the TIF itself. So. To be able to provide a project like this that's going to. Provide housing at the most attainable price we can. And deliver a hundred fifty five new housing units at essentially no risk. To the city, I think it's an incredible, uh, deal all the way around. It's a good win-win situation for everybody. And that's the reason why we structured that way from the beginning. So. I just wanted, that was the, the last main point that I wanted to. Uh, point out today. Um, there's other things that I have noted down, you know, the benefit from the local in. Local income tax duration from new residents moving into local spending. Um, and the support on existing retail stores and things like that. I mean, the impact is very broad. It's not just this. Tiff area. The folks that are moving into this area. Are going to benefit the community as a whole. So that was the, um, last main point that I wanted to make, so I wanted to make sure I had time to say so.
And the only other thing is, if you look back at everything that we've done over the last several years, the big projects have happened, they've all been public private partnerships. And that's what this is. This is a public, private partnership. And the decision to, i- it's an opportunity for our community to grow. And. There's no other areas in our community that I know of where we have an opportunity to grow at this extent. And, and he's putting a lot on the line in order to make this happen.
And again, I'll add too, I mean, he uses local contractors for your heating and air conditioning pump.
Yeah, our vendors and suppliers, yeah.
So. Benefits a lot of people. It's a tremendous economic impact.
And not to be a negative Nancy on that subject as well. But having said, the planning mission for the last twelve years. The last time we had a major subdivision come in, that, that was on this one, we had, we had two, Autumn Creek. Which saw tremendous pushback from the neighbors and it became a tremendous success on its own in Brookstone Seven. And both of those have been multiple years.
Correct.
Without, well, a lot of people talking or just not to come in and. They're going to grab, it's worth a tough market. Pay Indianapolis pricing. Or grab the middle of the city.
Ruder, have you seen any projections on, uh. The price of materials or anything, you know, with wildfires and all that? Have you seen anything, what's going to happen? I mean, are we, are we putting you in a herd and even making you do ten percent, two seventy five? That could be impossible.
Uh. Well, no, not yet. But that is a real thought. Um.
It's going to impact, and it will.
Hopefully it's a temporary impact.
Yeah.
So with that, that's a good thought, but I feel confident. With any potential headwind coming in that. I'm agreeing that we will be able to deliver. On that developer agreement with these. Your prices while it's still, I would deem it ambitious, uh. I'm confident in those numbers, so.
I think we have to consider who the, uh. Target. Audience is, target consumer for this price point as well. Vince has said this in, in a couple of different ways, so. Um, I'm looking from the, and Kevin, you bring up the inflation question. So I went back to the year two thousand and I looked at. Median in household income in Jasper was, was at four, these are approximates. But it was at forty two thousand in the year two thousand, in today's dollars to equal a, a, a twenty, twenty four dollar. You're looking at, that would have to be about seventy six thousand dollars for median income. For a household. Um. The median income in Jasper as one of twenty senses is sixty five thousand. So significantly less than. I guess as far as buying cars and certain significantly less than what it was in two thousand. In two thousand, the median home price was one seventy, I'm sorry, ninety six thousand, in today's dollars, it's one seventy three. But the median home value as of the twenty twenty census is two oh three. And so what that, what that tells me, there's a divergence there, and I'm not a real estate guy, and I don't know exactly what to do with this, but. It, what used to take two point three times annual income to purchase a median house. A median, median sized home. Being a price home, now takes three point one pers- or three point one times annual household income to do the same. So. You're getting less bang for your buck compared to what we're used to historically, so.
But that's happening everywhere. That's not necessarily just.
But, okay, but I go back to January last year, we had Dr. Hicks, Dr. Michael Hicks here, he said people are willing to pay a premium. So come live, to build a home, a higher priced home, to pay more, to live in a community like ours. He said, we're not. Doing too shallow. He said that. And, and so he, he's, he's an opinion that I do, I do, uh, appreciate and respect. I go back to him from time to time. And. I, I, I just think that that, that's a powerful statement. People are willing to pay a premium to live in a place like Jasper.
Does sixty seven thousand dollars include every person that lives in the county or in the, in the city of Jasper?
Just meets median, so there's as many people who earn more than that, or I should say many households who earn more than that. As there are who are less than that.
Well, most. I, I have some experience in manufacturing and Dean does, uh, Phil does. Most of the manufacturing, uh, in our, in our community, both the husband and the wife work. Okay, so. If, if sixty seven thousand is not what they're making with both, both parents, with both, uh, of the adults in the household. They're closer to eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. In my case, I don't work anymore, so I'm, I'm in your, your category there, the sixty seven thousand, you know, okay, I'm not, I'm not earned. Okay, so if that's the median for what we're doing here, when you take retired people and, and when I look at the manufacturing base that we have here. Um. It, it is absolutely critical. For, for, uh, for those companies to be successful, for us to remain Jasper. The Jasper that we know and love. It's absolutely critical for those, those companies to have employees and, and to be successful. And so I, I, that's the only disagreement I would have with the sixty seven thousand, um, you know, and, and the eighty percent of the people. Uh, that live in Jasper that work outside the home, a husband and wife probably work. And if anybody just raises that, please speak up. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm saying that's from my knowledge of. Forty years of working in manufacturing, so.
I, I wish the housing. The level we're in was simple. Wish there was a simple answer to it, but it's not, it's complex. It's got a hell of a lot of elements to it. Just you indicate price points and where you are and starting your life, how much. Money can you put toward a home versus a rental or, this kind of thing are big decisions. We have more people retiring today than have in long time. Because the boomers. Boomers are reaching retirement age, so you're seeing. Soon as income levels come down, even though they may have established their wealth throughout the years. Their spend is going to decrease. I, I think we're going to be hit by a lot of factors and we won't have enough time to digest it all and come up with a solution, but I. I do think the, what is proposed here. Is. Not out of line, it's not reasonable, it's not. Maybe we didn't do a good job on very beginning, and I'll take that as a bear. Um, this is our first one, this is our first, uh, presidential test, we're running something. But I think the fact that as we digest the information. Willing to come back and say we have the options here. To terminate. We have the option to do that. Get the option to make a modification as Ruder has requested to. To remove the in lieu of, and that's really what we're voting on at this point, time, the in lieu of. Removing that from the, uh, the TIF agreement. Whatever the other thing is all to begin with. We've got two degrees, right? But, you know, I think that's what we're voting on is, is to remove the in lieu of tonight. And I, I kind of want to focus on that. That's, that's what's been the question. Has been building the agenda. So. I did have, and the discussion's been good and healthy. I. You know, we've got, all got great points, and I think what that does is it brings us to greater solutions, better solutions for future. And even for that, for this situation. At this point in time, when we're bringing wheels back in to what to get west, what is, what the agenda is, that's. Elimination happens. So you speak, that's right. We didn't have anything scheduled for public, too long, publicly.
I would certainly to hear whatever that's to say.
Yeah, Steve. Restful.
Steve Meyer, Jasper's board, um. So I'd just like to talk about the, nobody here is opposed to development. That's, that's not the issue. I'm one hundred percent, obviously personally and professionally, in favor of development. The neighborhood up there is going to be great for the, the city and all the businesses and the companies that need those employees. There's no doubt about that. That's. To me, that's not the question. The question is, is a residential TIF the right tool to be using? A, in this situation, so I would like to throw out a few things. By the way, I'm in favor of commercial TIFs. I'm, I'm in favor of incentivizing developers. They take a lot of risk when they go in and put in a subdivision, so. This is nothing against development, and I think, uh, Kirsten's has done an incredible job in this community. My point is, from the school corporation standpoint. A residential TIF, number one, is not necessary, especially in this situation, because we all know that that development's going to take place, whether there's a TIF or not. There's no way. Kirsten's Homes and Designs, Kirsten's Development's going to pay thirty thousand dollars an acre and farm it. We all know that. And that's, I mean, I, I think they were crazy if they were going to continue to farm it. They're not going to do that. They're going to develop it. So the question is, if this is reducing the cost to the homeowner, that's great for the homeowner, but who's paying for that? I would say or propose that who's paying, not proposed, but I would submit who's paying for that is your constituents. Because there's no downward pressure on the tax rate, because this TIF maintains that tax level for twenty years. Or that, that increased AV would lower the tax rate and lower the taxes to your constituents. But now it's not. So that's ultimately at the end of the day, the taxpayers across the city of Jasper are paying for that. Tiff, um. The, uh, so residential tests are different, different than the commercial tests too, like the River Center, that probably would not have moved forward without a TIF. It needed some, that kind of boost. Again, a residential TIF doesn't need that. Secondly, a commercial TIF doesn't. Impact the schools like a residential TIF does. This. Neighborhood is potentially going to bring fifteen more students, plus or minus, based on the state averages into our school system. So yes, we are going to get. The average daily membership rate is going to increase, and we'll get that amount per student as they come in each year. It's counted twice a year. The problem is the tax money that comes in, that funds our facilities and operations, we won't be getting. So. The residential TIF is negatively impacting the school because it's increasing the student body count, but not increasing the revenue to the school. Um.
Have, have we ever, I think, I really should start, but I can hear you saying too. By state statute, again, school was able to, to ask us for money from the TIF. In there, to my knowledge, it would never have the tax.
That's correct, but. And I, and I said this in the redevelopment commission meeting, it's kind of hard for me to. Be happy about giving away my money and then getting the opportunity to ask for it back. So in that light, I was asked in this situation, if you want to continue with a residential TIF, I would request that there be a pass through. That basically carves out for the school, the money that would have gone to the school due to the increased AV is automatically given to the school. Without any request from the school, and that's allowed.
I think it is allowed. I thought you had, have a, you had, have a, we had a tight two week project. As I.
I've been told that you can have a pass through for a taxing entity such as a school that. That's accepted from the TIF, basically, so that money, so we're not doing this to the detriment of our students. And our school corporation. Um, so I would request that the pass through be applied. And the lastly, uh, two sessions ago, we had this, the TIF was a twenty or a ten year TIF. Then I don't know why, and I wasn't privy to any conversations, nor should I be, I guess, but why it went to a twenty year, I don't understand. Uh, Dr. Laura and, um, Travis McQueen and I left the first day council meeting, we said, that's fair, that's a good compromise. Ten years in. You probably wouldn't see that much money anyway to our entities. But in the ten to twenty years, now we're starting to see a big difference where that money is not coming into our. Our entities, and so. Ruder just said that he hopes to have it complete in ten years, I think, is, or what they were probably in the ballpark.
Market.
So my question is, why would we go beyond ten years on the TIF if the project's going to be complete in ten years? So. First and foremost. I, I guess if I were prioritizing my request. One, I don't think a residential TIF in this situation is reasonable. Definitely not necessary. Two, if you aren't going to do a residential TIF. I'm again requesting that it stay at ten years. So that we're not, and by the way, and that it passed through, or if it's, I mean, I don't think it should go twenty years, but if it is, either way, I think it depends, it should be passed through to the school corporation so that it's not. Uh. Detrimental to. Our schools. And that's my request.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other comments? If not, you know, again, what's been put on the table today has been to hold on the. The Google up and blue up. And want to take action on that first, if you really want anything else.
So I had, well, Renee just told me just to address one of Steve's concerns, the redevelopment commission can, um, annually.
Pass through.
Pass, do a pass through. Is that, I feel this, that we can do this one as a straight pass through to the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you. All the answers.
Yeah, no, that's right. They're going to take, um, sure, 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 sure. Well, that's, that's already seen, yeah, annual view that comes through.
That's correct, and there can be a request for that as well, right?
Yes.
Like.
Well, I think this will be a formal request, but Steve just gives an informal request for a pass.
So I would ask that.
Questioning this specific.
That's right, and that's how I was understood it to be on a TIF, was I had a request for a specific project that couldn't go into operating funds and had to go to. Construction, I don't know, transportation, I think it had to be a project specifically, due to a number of factors.
I would like to have that reviewed a little bit, if you wanted to, or Renee. I would like to have that reviewed a little bit, if you wanted to, or Renee. Research that a little bit and see what the qualifications are for that request.
That can be added on the front end, I will favor that.
Well, that'll come through RDC, no one's coming up. Getting there, and do we know that definitively, that it can be added on?
No, I just said that.
The only thing that can be changed about this tip is the order I said.
Tonight. We can't change the terms of the tip tonight. That what requires to go back through the process.
The dollar amount of conditional expenditure.
Yes, that's not changing the terms of the step, that's changing when conditional expenditure. So in order to change the terms of the sunset on the tip from a twenty year back to a ten year. Uh, you did provide a timetable on that, and it looks like that would start January twenty eighth. Providing an open door note, a law notice, and you cannot, the EDC I guess would have to need, it, it would be the same process that we went through. I, I'm sorry, I don't have the timeline in front of me, but, um, basically you would be talking about February. Meetings and, um, March meetings. Well, they had a February, I mean, then a January part, you would have to be a notice of a public here and have the EDC for February seventeenth.
But then it takes us back around the second of the, RDC is already.
They could do that, but I would rather see that the ordinance actually be ordered to a ten year sunset rather than a twenty year, that's what we originally talked about.
I disagree with that, but we turned to them earlier, I see, my opinion was. So this will be last time too, I would like to see us get the tip in place, I'd like to see it pay back. And I would like to see it go two years beyond that, so that we can apply those money towards. Fire, police, public safety. Issues that there is, is not, we all read different opinions, so. Where it is sort of. They come, at this point, we're, we have to read the unit tips. That we're not working to talk about a landing language. But. Basically, the options. Yeah, you can change it, so.
I'm ready for an option. I like to reaffirming the existing TIF agreement. And, uh, at least in lieu of the utility, so that would be an addition.
So I have a motion for John to, to leave the language in lieu of. Reaffirming the utility being person. With allowing the utility. Motion for John. Wait a second.
I'll say it, man.
Have a second, yeah. Further discussion.
I don't have any problem with the water main or the, the main extensions being included, but I do have a problem with reaffirming, so I don't know if that. Motion can be reworded differently because I would like to vote yes in favor of the utility. Main extensions, but I do not want to vote yes in favor of reaffirming the tip of the twenty year. Yeah, to be clear, um, the, the council's decision tonight would not be to affirm or not the utilities. That's been approved by the utility service board, I thought we had. So, um, what the council tonight decides is whether with that in place. They want to go forward and allow the TIF to remain as is. Because the TIF currently set, not the, not the ordinance, but the conditional expenditure agreement, it says that. That financing incentive is being provided in lieu of the utilities, so if you want to allow. The. TIP incentive and to go forward with the utilities, then you would vote. As John just said, to affirm the, the previous decision on. The TIF documents striking the in lieu of.
The utility service board last night voted to. Agree to the water main extension.
The pop council.
Yes, I understand, and I tried to explain that, but.
As it stands, I think the utility service board agreed to. The water main extension agreement up to four hundred and fifty nine. So then, I think the council's. Choices to either affirm it, removing the in lieu of language. The warming agreement stands. Your vote is specific about the conditional expenditure agreement, do you want to provide? A one point one million dollar conditional expenditure agreement, do you want to change that, or do you want to not go forward? And I think John's motion was to go forward with it.
With the twenty year sunset.
So, I mean, in ten years, we have to as well, you know. And, and we'd have to rework. Sure, so. So I have a motion from John, the second can cap. Any other discussion on that, thanks for. There are none. All in favors, everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so that four. All against, or aye?
Aye.
Nancy. Nancy, sure. Four, three. For next. Okay, the next item on the agenda. Is the donation acceptance. This is for, for the husband.
Yeah, so I think at the last two meetings, we set up a restricted use donation fund for a donation that we were receiving. From a donor that had their money at the community foundation, we have that fund set up, it's a restricted use, um, donation fund specifically for a fire tower. The park board is aware of. Um, the conditions surrounding the donation and are in agreement with it and plan to have the fire tower on their long range plan. So my request to you guys tonight is to accept a donation of a hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred and forty nine dollars and sixty six cents to go into. The fund that we created.
A special, a special line item.
We created a new fund, so it'll go into a new fund, um, park. I had to make sure that park was aware of the restrictions, and they are, and then I'm asking you to accept that.
So it will sit on that perpetuity until we.
We will, it will sit in there and we will invest it and we will put the interest earned back into the account. Um, other people could donate to that restricted use fund as well, um, and when the city is ready to build a fire tower.
Make a motion to accept the donation.
No motion for Gavin, second, second for Paul. Any further discussion? All in favors, everybody saying aye.
Aye.
He agrees. Uh, regional wellness center update. Since, uh. This week, I know we had updates and, and council members, and all those discussions with Baker Tilly explaining the. The finances as proposed, how we would be able to afford the facility. Uh, not to exceed a forty five million dollar amount. Broken into, uh, revenue sources to pay the bond, broken into the cash contributions and where they're coming from. And, uh, I think it was, those were good meetings, I appreciate the discussion and questions that took place during those meetings. We also have a finance committee meeting that was addressing the. The pro forma, what does it look like for the YMCA operating model for the next, for the first three years? Whether or not they'd be able to break even. And, uh. That Mike has, has built a draft on it. Not complete at this point.
He's not ready to send it out.
No, he's not ready to send it out.
Getting close, we saw it out there today, yeah, so.
Yeah.
He's getting closer, I think also, Paul, you sent out a update. Got pictures of kind of the renderings, that's ninety percent completed, what we're talking about, that's what it's going to look like.
I could ask right now, it looked like on the red right there was a. Oh, uh, basketball court in the, uh.
So in that pool, so the, the flat area, it's a kind of a basketball court. Oh, but that is also what they'll do for aqua aerobics, uh, and for lessons, it's just a flat, flat surface is in there, so. Kids that are in there, transitions in it, get a little dropped out again for the five bit depth. This was both, 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 going back to the, at one point, we told them what are the scale backs and things on there, and it came back to us with the seven thousand square foot. You want, get it all in, this is what we had to do, yeah, we're going the wrong way, we've got to get this turned around back, yeah, so. Move some things around, and the meetings are productive and slow, but productive. Now, I feel like, I think I mentioned Bill, talking today, that's, since those two guys, the, the next few weeks now, we have a much better idea of what the overall design cost is, is going to look like, so. Things one. Which would be earthwork and lights, and of course, learning chopping, got to drive, got to chop. We got to be ready to go in March, so, slow down here, we're not quite there yet. They're great meetings.
Yeah, I think Kirsten, um, you know, we sat through those meetings and we felt pretty comfortable with the coverage, not only, um. That we'd be able to afford. To make the bond payments as projected, but then also to have additional funds still available to us. Including all the funds that today are dedicated to streets, sidewalks, old projects. Was going to have an impact on our budget. That, that was, that was good.
And we just have to make sure that the department doesn't have an impact on our budget.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that, uh. Is, at least proposed to look at was to develop a reserve. Which to draw in order to be able to handle, you know, shortfalls in the operation, so. We establish that upfront. At least ensure that you're certainly, you could have enough there to cover any shortfalls. I, I think that is a durable situation, thought to Mike, he decided to put that into our fundraising goal, so it's part of that rather than going back to the city. And, and also talking about the down, for the long term maintenance, so we can open up. Getting that.
Or getting that funding.
Try to write my lawyer that will, will be responsible for long term maintenance, right?
Long term maintenance, but that preserve, operating preserve is also a heavy for maintenance, so they want to handle it. There will be some.
Is that any different than any other building project in our respect? Mayor, um.
We still got a lot of work.
And, and I had also asked, although, you know, we went through all these dollars and with them have a big artillery and everything, and it all did make sense, sometimes when he talks, I understand anything to talk about. But anyway, I was also asking for kind of like an elevator speech or a paragraph that when people ask us as council members or whomever. That we could, and they say, how are you going to pay for this building, that we would have that information, and we could say, this is how, not looking through newspapers and saying it's this much and this much, but basically, in a nutshell. The intention of how to pay for this building and how to maintain the building.
And again, as, as Nancy is. Question, I, I committed to do it, the elevator speech, I hope it is something that happened clearly tonight. I, I don't, we've had a lot of things over the last couple of days since we had that meeting, but, but that I will provide to council members.
One nice, nice highlight, by myself, I had, I mean, so two things that are in beverage stacks, was to. Is far outperforming what we were projecting to use that to pay, sort of back and come back in, fall back and things over at it.
Kirsten, when did we actually start getting money off that issue for last year?
It's a two month lapse, so the January, this, January's, um, collections were reported in February. Had reported and paid in February, and then the, uh. Department of Revenue paid us in March, so that's why we won't have, um. December's payment.
So we received eleven months, is that?
We have received eleven months, we're at five hundred and nineteen.
Months, it was.
And the first few months, it was in the twenty to thirty thousand dollar range, and now we've seen some sixty five thousand dollar months, I would say the average is probably about fifty.
That's looking pretty exciting there, so, you know, that's usually a big, a big idea.
It's going to be good.
I would think so.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll see, I'll let you know.
A lot of it's police and get people on board to.
Right, so, yeah, we had some trouble at the beginning getting people for, but the department I worked for, I worked with them, and they will. Most divulged, it's confidential information because it's people's taxes, but, um, they took the list that I had of people that I expected to pay. And they compared it to who was paying, and they reached out to those who weren't, so.
Yeah, one, one of the points that Baker Tilly made, I want to preemphasize, is we're taking a conservative look at revenue. And we're taking a conservative look at expenses, so we're not, we're going the high side on expenses. On the revenue side, stay on the low side, so we can make sure. So hopefully, when the whole plan is done here. Comes together, yeah. But, but you know, I think that I ultimately know that appreciate the engagement. The groups that are working, the master, working group, the YMCA, and I think everybody's doing a good job trying to. And the fundraising. I know the commitment on the fundraising, you know, we originally had a fifteen million dollar goal. We're looking now to include other amounts, which includes the cost of the van. And. Now the operating. Reserve, so, like you have fundraising and having to. So they're going to have that. But, you know, we're coming a long way, and, and like Paul said, with the drawings, we all get excited now.
It's all helpers. It's scary, I've seen some physical, physical, uh. Lenderings, it makes it a little less, it's still scary, but you see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Uh, Paul, thank you for the update, I, uh, mentioned, uh, earlier that, uh. We must have this every month, but if next, or between now and the next meeting, a couple of things do come up, it sounds like there's something happening right now. If you could give a update to the board at any time period on there, we would certainly appreciate it, I think, again, communication is everything in projects like this, I feel a lot more comfortable with it, we were all on there. This year makes me feel more comfortable about everything, so I, I think most people would agree, so, thank you.
Well, that was my last time, and I saw, yeah, we're here for the, sorry again, I added in my physical drawings.
Yeah.
I said, I'm going to send everybody else to see, because I have media problems, you know, phone last night and such. In the first one, so.
We move on, next agenda. The uniform conflict of interest disclosure statements, we have financial equity, let's tell me, can you help say, can Clayton help say, Kail Kenees, Kirsten Kenees, Paul O'Reilly, Phil Monday, Phil Schmidt, Josh Gonsalves, and Rob.
That's an all time list.
That's a big list, doing them all at once, it's great.
Well, I have a review of the, uh, statements that I got copied, they're all big portion to.
I have a motion from John. I'll say, second, Vince.
I have a question, true. Uh, Josh's, he does not really give a description of where his conflict of interest is, he has not, like, of all, both of those. I would like to see his field and Bertha will need to explain what his conflict is, not just saying that he's, um. It just, it just says, I guess, that he works himself completely well, but it does really say what the conflict.
I don't, I don't think it was in there that you were related.
He did, but in, he worked himself pretty well, sure, too.
Yeah, that was the only one, if that could be correct, that I.
If my name's on the list, can we vote? So.
I don't know if they have enough people to know. Three. Four, four.
We need a unanimous consent here.
You would vote for all of them, but.
Vote for all, except for you'll abstain from one.
Why did you say the mayor, um. Can we just read the names?
Summary here, I can.
Read the names. Read, just.
Just read ours, very impressive.
Read a name and vote, and don't vote if you are a person name.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, I just remember, Nancy, I'm really a member of common council, board of public works, employed by Jasper Chamber of Commerce, Commerce and A, Matt Eckery, principal of Baker Tilly.
Back in. Paul, so, Kevin, all in favors, if they say aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
And then I have Josh Gonsalves, director of community development and planning, realtor herself for free, Welsh reality.
I said.
Third, second, chair. Discussion, all.
It could just be more complete, I appreciate it.
There's a saying, aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Vince Homing, member of common council, relation to how many brothers within the city does contract with, from time to time.
I'll make a motion for Vince.
So there's, it was saying, aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Kenny Homing, fire chief, code enforcement officer, his son Leighton is a rep for, didn't get fire company, but the city does sometimes purchase supplies from.
Make a motion to approve, can you?
Second, Dan.
For discussion, all in favors, if they say aye?
Aye.
Then I have Leighton Homing, saying lieutenant Jasper Fire Department, at rep for Degas Fire Company, which who the city sometimes does purchase supplies from.
I'll make a motion to it briefly.
Second. Nancy, Chad. Discussion, they're just gonna say aye?
Aye.
Um, Kial Canese, director of personnel safety and loss control, and a member of the GIE advisory committee, GIE, listed guy contracts with the city on a yearly basis.
Make a motion to approve, Kevin.
I'll say.
All in favors, saying aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Can we do the rest of my application?
Nope, Phil. Kirsten Canese, third treasurer of the city of Jasper, has been our owner, base construction, cave quarries, half hour paving, which who the city. Next up, Paul Lorai, member of the common council, employed with, um, hope equipment, who the city does sometimes purchase equipment from.
I'll make a motion for Paul.
Vince. Favors in the setting, aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Time's name.
Phil Monday, member of the common council, owner of Booney Outdoors LLC, which who the city does purchase equipment from, from time to time.
Make a motion to approve, Phil.
I'll say.
Kevin, Nancy. All favors in the saying, aye?
Aye.
Phil Schmidt, utility service board member, owner of Schmidt Contracting, but who the city does business with.
Make a motion, Phil.
Say.
It's, all favors are saying, aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Rob Young, general, general manager of utilities, sits on the Apple board, the city has a power sales contractor, Apple.
All favors for saying, aye?
Aye.
That's all.
All right. Anything else? There's not even a tail motion to the chair.
I made that motion.
The motion for Kevin?
I'll say.
Second, Vince. All in favors, if they're saying aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.